Take off my jacket or not, it is today.
Good morning. This is our work session. This meeting will not be streamed live on the RBC YouTube channel. Today is July 8th. And we are having this at 555 Main Street, third floor hearing room in Meca, Colorado. We are doing a work session. Work sessions are intended to provide opportunities for the commissioners to study difficult issues, gather and analyze information, clarify problems, or give staff directions. No official decisions will be made. Work sessions are on a floating docket. The schedule is provided for the informational purposes only. The board may alter the schedule, take breaks during the meeting, or continue an item for future work session dates. So the first item we have on here is CCI regarding the E county lines. And I had asked for this one to be on there. Kelly, you had sent an email asking a question about, you know, do we propose? And I was assuming some legislation, but I just wanted to get some clarification on what you were wanting.
So two different things in regards to CCI that I'd like to discuss. So it looks like their legislative agenda process and proposals, they need those in by, like, in the next two weeks. So I don't know if you guys have any specific agenda items, but one that has been bugging me is how the, I can't remember what they're called, but they're at the Capitol every time a bill comes through or a ballot initiative, they put a fiscal note to it. If it appeared, let's just say I don't see very, that it's very accurate. So for instance, what we were watching this year with the bills, if it was a bill that had a high priority to move it through, it had very little or no fiscal impact. And if it was something they didn't want to go through, it had more of a fiscal impact. And I can't, I knew no, but I just can't think of what they're called. I should have written it down. And then as a ballot initiative, and I think it's the same group, does it? It's a bunch of economists that are based in the basement of the Capitol. They, I'll use the Wolf Ballot Initiative as an example. What they say, it was going to cost $300,000 for the Wolf program. And it's costing $3 million a year at this. So I don't, and I, I've talked to multiple lobbyists. And their response is all lobbyists would really like to know how those numbers are coming up with. And I don't know if there's a way we can dig into that, but I think that's something we could ask CCI to do. Is here's the other thing that I've heard the conversation at CCI is they don't take into and they don't look at or consider any fiscal impact it has on the counties. So I think CCI is interested in that conversation and making it so they do have to consider what fiscal impact they will have on the subdivisions of the state. So I don't know what that really is or what that looks like, but that's an issue. So trying to say, the name will come to me, I'm pretty sure. Sorry, I didn't have it written down.
So your understanding is there's this group that they come up with these numbers, so to speak, if there's a, if there's a fiscal note attached
Yes.
to a bill. And that doesn't always happen until the end, sometimes.
Yeah.
So, okay.
If every bill, you will see, it'll say either does not have a fiscal impact or here's fiscal impact. And they're not very accurate. Again, an example from this year, the Wild Horse Bill that they did. It had 12 items was listed that they would do. And yet, and every one of those, and I testified this way, every one of those would require money. You know, help this, do this. Every one of those was going to take money. And it showed no fiscal impact. So that's a big challenge that we are up against. With the state's budget like it is, I think it's even more so.
And I have not heard of that. Who, I mean, have you talked to other commissioners about it?
Well, it's, it happens with the feds. Federal government does the same thing. And I can't remember what they call the, what do they call the people that tell us what they've impacted.
I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on that name. But yeah, there's no question in my mind.
It is something that CCI should be interested in and would be a good voice to pressure them into paying more attention to that. And, and I think that they should not only, they should tell the counties what it's going to impact them.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're leaving a lot of that off on purpose.
Because sometimes we don't even get that fiscal note till the very end. So is it, because right now they're taking legislative proposals.
It's the Office of Legislative Fiscal Analysis. Well, that's in Utah, sorry, opposite in Colorado, something like that.
Oh, that's not here.
Okay. See what we get.
I think in Colorado, they're by the legislative council staff.
Yep. That's all it's called is Legislative Council Staff. They prepare the fiscal notes to analyze the potential financial effects of a bill. On state and local government, it even says. So, I mean, I don't have a specific thing, but I think it's worth having that conversation and moving, seeing if we can move it forward. Now, in their request, they say that it has to have a legislative fix. And it could, it, two things, it can be either a bill that needs to, if it's a bill that needs to move this year, they need to immediately begin the process of securing sponsors, but they could also see it as a long-term priority. And look at that. But I, the comments that I heard from CCI this year, I think there are multiple commissioners are very interested in making sure that they put a county fiscal impact on these bills that are, they're shoving it down to us.
Yes. Kind of along those same lines, I, I'm upset about the, the, and, and wonder if there's a way that we can push some legislation or something to hold the, hold the state from their fees. Their fees just keep going up and up and up and doubling, tripling them. And, and the reason they're doing that is because Tabor holds them back and we need money. And, and it's, it's just an unfair tax. And I wonder if there isn't some way that we can pressure them into doing some legislation on that. Tabor's there for a reason and they're, they're circumventing it with, with fees. And that's just not right.
So the question is, and I, so for instance, and Sean's not here, but so just as an example, the clerk and recorder fees that went up, was that a bill or do they do that through?
Secretary of State or something.
Yeah, I'm, yes. Policy development or what, um, regulation kind of thing. Do fees have to go through the legislature? I'm not a hundred percent sure. Don might know that.
That's a good question. How do they get authority to increase the fee?
The Cora fees are certainly statutory. Is that right, Don? That the other fees would be also?
Yes, they are statutory. Yeah, the current bill was 241269 that modified the recording fees for the secretary of state or the state and county clerk's offices.
So is that, is that the county clerk? So is that vehicle registration? Is that the bill that increased all of the fees on that?
No, I don't.
More.
Yeah, I don't know. I, it could, it, it's basically, oh, I, where I can pull it up right now, you know? But it, it's definitely for the records of fees. So if you record a document or, or something like that.
Well, another thing that they, that they have just done or, or last year is they, they, they come back and they say, they've got a, when you buy a new tire, they have a fee on there. So they came back and said, weird, we've got some good news. We cut that fee in half. And then they added another fee to it that was double. So they, they more than doubled it. So they're just playing games with it.
And that's what they did with oil and gas and doing fees on oil and gas producers with their vehicles. They just put fees and added that onto it, which is.
Well, that's, that's why I'm asking, is there a way? Or can we, we just need to start screaming about it, I guess.
But I, I like your idea of having that conversation when we, I mean, we don't, I mean, is it, is it some sort of legislation and asking CCI to follow up on it? Or how do we go about doing that and hearing what other counties are thinking about it? I think that that's the right place. And I, and I can't get my computer to come up, but I believe it's, it is definitely, it's on a Friday.
Yeah, it's like the 17th or 18th.
Let me see. It's the 25th, I believe. Um, yes, the 25th. So.
This is saying they're due by the 18th.
Yeah, but their meetings on the 25th, so.
I think, I mean, I think it's probably just a phone call to some of them and say, okay, what? I mean, I'm happy to draft something if we just know what language we want to use and how to propose it. So. I just, I'm just seeing it as a real problem. And I've had that conversation with multiple lobbyists and they all look at me and say, if you can figure that one out, let us know.
Well, we're not the one who should figure it out. They could answer it.
It's the state that should, yes. So that's what I would like, if you guys are good with it, I'll, and I will see what I can learn on it. I'm good with it. No, I'm, I'm.
Thank you.
At the same time, I'll ask about the fees and just get a little better understanding of how fees in general are done. If they have to go through a bill, because if they have to go through a bill, then it's a matter of just lobbying those bills to say no. But if it's, if they're doing it through regulation kinds of stuff, which is what I'm afraid of, those are really hard to keep track of because it's like what we said. And whether it's oil and gas regs or whatever, this legislature passes a bill and then the staff takes it and gets power hungry and is creating regulations that are even farther than what this state legislature meant for it to go. So. Okay, I will pursue that.
Thank you. You said you have one more?
Um, the other thing, they talked about their informal policy groups. And Jennifer, I don't know how many of these that you participate in, but they have housing slash land use, renewable energy, human services, behavioral health, early childhood, agriculture, wildfire, revenue, which is probably where these fee things go, and road maintenance. So I, that's a lot to keep up with. And I didn't know which ones you are engaged with and if there is value for us to divvy those up across the three of us. So we can continue to have a voice in that.
So I definitely participate in the housing, land use, um, human services, behavioral health, early childhood. Um, I try to attend ag as, as I can.
Ag, wildfire.
Wildfire, I, I know, I can tell you I'm not, I don't get any of those emails.
Revenue and road maintenance.
And, um, road maintenance, she, that's kind of a hit and miss, just being on the TPR. I mean, if there's more that they're having, I'm not aware of it. But the other ones, and I'm, and I'm good if you guys want to take on the other ones that I'm not attending. Um, I tried to, I'm going to have to look in the, that road maintenance, I think is a little bit new because I, I've not seen a whole lot on that one. But yeah, I mean, if you, if you guys want to take on some of those, I'm good. It's more, I will tell you, it's more informal. And it's more the state talking to us in those subcommittees. I mean, we have a voice at the table, but what I have found, especially housing and land use, it's the governor's office that's kind of, I mean, CCI sets those up and there's kind of that forum for it, but they, the state really kind of runs those, at least I feel like they do.
And I've set in on the ag ones and that's a lot of it, but it's still, and I think it's an opportunity to, you know, speak up and push back at times. And so I'm happy to continue to do ag and I'll do the wildfire. Renewable energy kind of falls in my kind of thing.
But that much you want.
But Doug, what do you? And I'm sorry, I didn't share this. I just printed this off so I would know it, but.
Yeah, I don't know, but I, why, why wouldn't you want Doug in doing the wildfire stuff?
Oh, Doug, yeah. I'm like going, well, why wouldn't you? Yeah, why wouldn't you want to do that, Doug? Um, and I don't know how that works with staff. Can they, will they let staff or contractors do that?
Committees, absolutely.
Okay, that's a good idea. I can ask you if you'd be willing to do that.
We just need to let them know so that they accept them into the meeting is pretty much what it comes down to. Because they, if they don't know the name, they don't accept them after a mishap that happened a few years ago. So. I, yeah, I'm good with that.
So then there's revenue and road maintenance. So what, does the road maintenance one, and a lot of these are just nothing more than, than a distribution list or information, but then some of them have a few meeting, like the housing says meeting as needed. Um, and so forth that way. So just, um, again, I'm happy to do renewable energy again, it's just a distribution list. And so more than one of us can certainly do it, but just thinking about if they have meetings, where we can be. So just thought I would bring that up.
Timeline on another. And that's the Madison AI.
Okay.
If maybe we could come back to this discussion.
For his.
I'm thinking possible. You got to look that up.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so next we'll move on to Madison AI demo.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having me today. Uh, my name is Hayden Dixon. I am the, um, head of marketing and I'm on the founding team here at Madison AI. Um, I know that we have had a, a demo previously. I think, um, manager Edwards put this on the schedule just so that we can do a quick refresher on it. Uh, and then she sent a, a couple of use cases that she wanted me to demonstrate, um, today. So I'm going to try to keep this, um, you know, manage the time effectively, but about a 20 to 30 minute little quick overview. Before I jump in and, and kind of give everybody like a background on, you know, what we're proposing here, I wanted to just, um, show you as you were having the conversation a minute ago about, um, fees and, and how it's regulated and, um, you know, is it a part of the Colorado revised statutes? Does it have to be, you know, you know, passed through the house, um, to do that? Um, I pulled up, so we're, we're running a full deployment right now with Pittkin County. And, um, they have Colorado code as a part of their knowledge domain. So I asked it. Um, and so I did this on our dev site because, um, Pittkin, like you all are a Google shop, so I can't actually get into their, um, knowledge domain. But, uh, I asked Pittkin County's, uh, knowledge AI, like, you know, are the fees in Colorado, like clerk and recorder fees set by the state legislature? Uh, does the legislator men, does the legislature mandate fees? Uh, in this case, yes. So, um, it actually was House Bill 241269 for the new change in recorder fees, just like as an example. So. Um, what I'm here to talk about today is building a, a knowledge assistant that is based on Rio Blanco's, um, institutional knowledge. So all of the files that are part of your, uh, government's public record um, and that represent the decision-making process that you have all worked so hard to do, but also bringing in different data sets that are relevant to, um, supporting the decision-making process as a board. So in this case, um, we, for Pittkin County, we brought in Colorado code. Um, and so that was where this information is being pulled from. So just, you know, to try to kick this off a little bit, pull this up as you were having a conversation, um, just to sort of reference and like ask some questions and, and find out. Uh, so with that, I'm going to jump over. So here's how I'm going to do this. I'm going to jump to a deck just to kind of give everybody like a refresher on, um, you know, how we build AI assistance, uh, in cities and counties, uh, like sort of the structure and the way that we do it. Uh, and then from there, I'm going to jump through a couple of different, um, knowledge domains to touch on some of the use cases that, uh, manager Edward sent over. Um, from there, I will, um, open the floor and if you have any questions, and then we can also review like what an implementation timeline might look like. Um, so with that, I'm going to jump over to a deck really quick. Uh, I'm not going to go full screen on this just because we're only going to cover this one slide. So Madison AI, so what we do is we, um, build AI assistants to accelerate sort of the everyday work for managers, clerks, electeds and, uh, department leaders. So, and we do that by pulling together the, we like to call it the institutional knowledge, but a lot of the public record information that, um, represents, you know, all of the decision-making process for a city or county over decades, uh, of, you know, over decades that represents thousands of files. So usually it kind of looks like something like this. So we would take, um, you know, your agenda packets, meeting minutes, board presentations, uh, ordinances and resolutions, master plans and strategic plans, uh, budgets and act for code, uh, and, and state code, and any other files that represent like the main knowledge of a city or a county. We take those files, um, we unite them together into a single closed database that is just the records of the city or county. So this would just be the file sets for Rio Blanco. Um, and we put it into a custom closed data set. And then on top of that, we build, um, AI assistance to accelerate sort of everyday work, uh, in local government. So drafting staff reports, I know that you guys don't have them right now, but it was a conversation , uh, manager Edwards and I had about maybe, you know, moving towards having staff reports as a part of your packet without adding additional burden on staff to write them, um, looking up voting history on topics over time, uh, drafting, uh, ordinances and resolutions and looking up ordinances and resolutions, uh, doing code lookup, creating timelines of topics for decision-making, you know, across many, many years, uh, administrative policy lookup. So these are workflows, you, you know, we know you are tackling every single day. And so we are building our knowledge assistance specifically to tackle those workflows. So what's really important about what we have built is that this, this knowledge and this data is not being shared with other, you know, generative AI systems. So there's a lot of chatter in the world right now about, you know, sharing data and having AI models learn from your information and your data. And so our model doesn't train, um, other systems, doesn't train other models, and that information isn't shared um, across other like client deployments. It's just the knowledge of, um, Rio Blanco. Um, and it's not connected to the open internet as a data source unless you tell it to. So we have, you know, there are times when you need to do research, um, to include internet research in your results. But we are doing so in such a way that it's never going to return information that, um, you know, mix your information with information from the internet. We're always going to delineate this information came from your content, this information came from the internet and like results are in purple. Um, and so we're really focused on, um, really trying to give electeds and staff five hours a week back on everyday work tasks. So, you know, as a board and a commission, you know, you have questions and, you know, questions that need answers so that you can feel confident in, you know, making the, you know, the right decisions for your community. Um, and there's also like this, this push and pull, um, to ask staff for more information because you need information to, to make good decisions as a, as a council. So this is a way to help alleviate some of the administrative burden and give everybody a tool to research your, um, data set and record without, you know, adding, you know, lots and lots of hours and staff research, but also just being able to like play with it and find out, you know, what information is available within your data set. So. Um, from here, I'm going to jump back over to a couple of different use cases. So. I'm going to start, um, really quick. I'm, I'm going to walk us through these tabs. So, um, this is Washoe County, uh, in Reno, Nevada. This is their, um, deployment of Madison AI. Um, so, uh, you know, the place I always like to start is, you know, what's in the data set? Um, so in Washoe County's instance, it is 16,000 files, last updated yesterday. Um, so agendas, minutes, staff reports, attachments from 96 to present, their budgets from 13 to 2025, code, ordinances, electeds, the Nevada revised statutes, master plan, strategic plan, and other 1996 to 2015 data. So, um, you know, in, in your deployment, we would be pulling together data and documents from, you know, your internal Google Drive files, but also your, um, you know, documents from the clerk and reporter. Uh, and, and then any other like relevant master authoritative documents that would be relevant to you, but I always like to start there. So this is what makes our application different is we start with the data of the government. Um, so I'm just going to hop over to a tab. So the first thing that, uh, manager Edwards wanted to me to show everybody is, you know, how it would, it's possible to look up, um, previous ordinances and resolutions. So I'm going to actually hop into, so this is Pasadena, Texas's, um, deployment of Madison AI. Um, I am going to jump from a couple of different knowledge domains because um, every city and county is a little bit different. And I happen to know that for Pasadena, Texas, they haven't done a codification since like 1970. So they have a lot of ordinances and resolutions. So, you know, their use case for them, for this application was to be able to find all of their ordinances and resolutions because they have like lots and lots of historical stuff. So um, in this, uh, example, I'm going to ask it to find all ordinances and resolutions for Microsoft contracts from these three years. And so this takes, you know, probably 20 to 30 seconds depending on, well, actually 20 seconds to 90 seconds depending on how complicated the work task is. Um, so in the other tabs, I have already pre-prompted this stuff just so that we don't have to sit and watch all of this generate, you know, together. Um, but I just wanted to show you how, you know, it works in this context. Awesome. So, um, this is what it looks like when it is finished, um, running. So it pulled the ordinances, uh, and resolutions related to Microsoft contracts. Um, it pulled the, the number and, and the date, the description, the vendor, the purpose. And then there's these little reference bubbles. So these are where Madison is pulling the data from, from their, um, record of information. Uh, so, um, our application is trained and tuned to make sure that we are citing things, um, as it's writing them. So this is for FY23. FY24. And then a, a nice summary table at the bottom. So this is, uh, one example of, you know, looking up, uh, uh, an ordinance by like, like, let's say topic. Uh, so I, I pre-did all the rest of these. I'm going to run through them. So, um, I asked it to explain an ordinance with a number and then provide any historical context. Um, so this is Pasadena, Texas, you know, 2025 dash oh six eight, oh, oh, eight, six, excuse me. Uh, and this was a, they, so in Pasadena, Texas, they have like a 90 day ordinance. Uh, you know, sort of that they have been, um, renewing every 90 days to try to figure out how they are going to do permitting and placement of battery storage systems in facilities within the city's jurisdiction. Um, so this sort of explains that, uh, and then cites, you know, where uh, this information is coming from, this one came from information in a city council packet. Uh, so that's an example of how we can look at, you know, historical ordinances and resolutions, um, that we have already covered. Um, I'm going to, uh, jump into the next sort of thing that we wanted to cover, which was looking up, um, previous action related to topics. So looking at previous voting history. looking up previous action related to topics. So looking at previous voting history over time. And then also, yeah, so just looking at previous action over time. So in, I'm going to go back over here. Sorry. In Washoe County's application, so we have these like little tabs, right? And so these little tabs are agents. And so agents are trained and tuned to do specific sets of actions within a data set to give us a really structured and tailored output. So one of the things that we have worked really hard on is looking up, you know, previous, previous action as a board or council. So we have these two. So look up voting history or timeline of topics. These are the ones I'm going to show you. These ones are very comprehensive. They take about ninety seconds to run, so I pre-ran them today. But what it does is it gives us a complete look at how we have voted over, you know, an action over, over time. And then this one is designed to help us look really detailed how we voted on a topic over a single year. So this is the complete history. This is called the complete history table agent. And so this agent is, I asked it to provide a comprehensive and detailed list of all actions related to the CARES campus, which is a homeless and unhoused, unhoused communities facility that the county constructed in partnership with the city of Reno. So when you click on these little buttons, you know, these little tabs, in these brackets are, you know, where you would type the thing that you're looking for. So we've tried to make it easy and like basically pre-prompted so that you don't have to, you know, think too hard about, you know, what you're writing so that you can get a good, a good output. So CARES campus. So I'm going to zoom in on this. So this facility was constructed from twenty twenty, I think until about twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. There was a transfer of management between the city of Reno to Washoe County. There was also a, you know, additional construction that went on. And part of this was constructed with ARPA funds. So just as, as context. So these are all of the event descriptions and the dates of the votes related to this, you know, facility, and if there were any fiscal impact notes with the agenda item. So, you know, our, our application is really, really tuned to try to give a complete overview and context of historical actions over time. So this one's quite long because it was, you know, over several years. There were lots of presentations and there was information that had to go into, you know, planning the facility. There was a land acquisition that had to happen to make this vision come, become a reality. And so all of this stuff is citing all of the documentations that are a part of the main knowledge AI for Washoe County. So this one did take quite a bit, you know, quite a while to run just because it's, it's very long. It's very comprehensive. It took a lot to construct and build this facility. So that's an example of like a really long historical look at a topic over time with fiscal impact noted. So this one's, this agent's designed to look at a voting record over years. So I asked it to look for a detailed list of all custodial service contracts for low security buildings. I was reading through an agenda and this caught my eye within a fiscal year. And so what was interesting to me about this is the board voted on this contract with a facilities management company in February. But then this topic kept coming up over time. So you can see like, you know, it carried, it carried. And then they kept reviewing it and they kept having discussions about it. Public comment, board discussion regarding the process, you know, how they actually awarded the initial contract. They got employee feedback, discussion on contract monitoring and reporting. And so like I said, all this stuff decided. And so I was like, why, you know, I just asked them like, why was this contract discussed in February and again in September? After the contract had already been approved, it didn't really make a lot of sense to me. And so why was this in the agenda through the year? And so really what happened was there were concerns with how the contract was being managed, what the performance metrics were for this contract, and they took community and staff input and then revoted on it to re-initiate the contract and renegotiated some of it. So I wanted to show this just because it, it, it's a double click into how we can do research as staff, but also as a board, like things that continue to come up in, in conversation as a board or a commission. You can ask it to explain, you know, why, why does this continue to come up or, you know, what was mentioned in the, in the minutes and or comment from the community. So think of it like, I like to tell people to think of this like a really eager, overzealous intern that kind of has knows everything that's happened in the city or county that we're working with over like ten to fifteen years really is a good marker of time. So you can continue to, you know, ask it a question, but they continue to volley back and get answers to, you know, even deeper questions on topics, how a board voted, you know, maybe why we made this decision or why we didn't. So just, you know, some context there. So, okay, the next, the next item that Manager Edwards wanted me to show today was looking at previous letters of support or letters of opposition that the commission may have written over time. I know that, you know, it was just being discussed earlier about, you know, lobbying to support bills that, you know, you do or do not want to. And so this is, there are two things I'm going to show you. First is pulling up previous letters of support or opposition that would be included as a part of this database. Or, and, excuse me, and drafting new letters, you know, based on historical references, but also new contextual information. So here is, I know I asked, this is Santa Paul in California. I picked this one because I know that they have a sort of a library of letters that they write as a small, a small agricultural community in support or in opposition of things that the state legislature passes. So this was, I asked it to review and summarize an opposition letter with a number. And I asked it to explain it sort of in simple terms because I, I didn't understand it. So it was able to pull up this, you know, what AB three zero nine three was. So this was a framework for local governments to account for the housing need of people experiencing homelessness. And there was a reason that Santa Paula opposed it, and these were the reasons why. There was duplication and redundancy, a lack of funding, unclear requirements. So these were all things stated in their letter. And then, you know, it's citing all of the information from the document itself. So sometimes we'll see, you know, one, two, three. So these are all citing the same document. They're just citing different sections of it to create that information. So this was the, the summary of that.
May I ask a question, Hey?
Absolutely.
Um, so with AI, sometimes if using like chat GPT, it will make up things. Now you can ask it if it made up any facts and it'll tell you usually that, yeah, I made up this, that, and the other for context.
Yeah.
Will this AI also do that? Will it just interpret that and say, well, based on this, I'm making up this assumption?
The answer is mostly, I'm going to say mostly no. So we have worked really hard to tune this application to work in fact. So we know that cities and counties have, like, we have to work in fact as an organization to make decisions. And, and that's just the, the sort of the plain truth when it comes to, to local government. So there's two things that are important to know. If, if the information is not included as a part of the, like, data brain of the government we're working with, we've worked really hard to make this, make our application say, I, I don't have any information on that in my index. So like if you ask, you know, who's Taylor Swift? That's, that's an example. It's like Taylor Swift is not, unless you're knowing, maybe you're Los Angeles County and you've had a bunch of events with Taylor Swift. That information should not be a part of the index and it should tell you that. I will say, we have tuned this application to not hallucinate, to not make things up. But this is, this is true with any generative AI application and anybody who tells you otherwise is fibbing to you. It's not perfect. Like you can push it to, to make things up, but you do have to try pretty hard. So one thing I wanted to show was an example of how, but like it's, it's a bit of a balance between, you know, you know, making fact up and then pulling information. So in the example that I can think of that's perfect to illustrate this is drafting a new opposition letter, right? So the, the data brain for Rio Blanco wouldn't have context to why we would maybe want to oppose something. But maybe we can, we can use this tool to help us start the draft on an opposition letter. So I'm going to show an example of that. So this is California. You can like the politics or not, but you know, they have a lot of Senate bills. So this is SB two forty three. I picked this one because it's AI and that's, you know, the, the area of, of work that I understand and know. So I read over this Senate bill and I think that on the whole, the Senate bill is actually designed to put in some regulations and restrictions to prevent, in, in, in a good context, to help prevent AI companies from allowing their AI chatbots, they called it, to encourage suicide, right? Or self-harm. And I think that that's actually quite a good thing. But I read through the bill and maybe there's a section in here that I would oppose because it said, I'm going to just, I'm going to copy this prompt really quick so I can show you. So what I did is I downloaded a copy of the Senate bill and I uploaded it. So there's two, you know, two things. There's the permanent data brain that's like the master institutional knowledge of a government. And then there is the, we call them like temporary files or like your files. So you can upload additional files to include in the return of results in a more draft way. So, and then you can delete them later. And so what I did is I copied the legislation text here and I uploaded it into this knowledge domain. And then I had it draft a letter of opposition to this bill. I said it was well intentioned, except for this section where it stated AI applications should not reward users for providing rewards to a user at unpredictable interval or after inconsistent number of actions, you know, this, this is the language from the bill. And I said, this is no different from other social media platforms or algorithms that other companies use to reward behavior. The state should not attempt to regulate this. Other than that, this bill is well thought out. This is an opinion that, so, you know, take that for what it is. It's an opinion. It's not fact. This is just what I wanted to show. So what it did is it helped draft a, a letter of opposition. And so this isn't perfect, right? We would expect to need to take this information and continue to revise it with human tone, revise it in the way that we would maybe want it in our format, revise it for more opinion in, in this context. But what it did do is it took the information from this file and it made some inferences from the prompt that I gave it to, to draft something. So it is being a little bit creative with some parameters, right? So I gave it file context, I gave it instructions, and then it, you know, helped me draft this. Does that help answer your question?
Yep. Thank you.
Cool. So those are the four use cases that we wanted to just talk about today. The other quick thing that I'm going to talk about is, you know, what this would look like from an implementation standpoint and implementation timeline standpoint. So I pulled up, this is a part of the proposal that Manager Edwards has. The idea here is that we can get this AI model built and deployed to you in, fully in sixty days. So in this proposal, I kind of, these gray boxes in this table, these are like important milestones that we, you know, have to hit to, to hit that like sixty day deployment. But really the way that this works is, you know, we work with staff to collect the files. Then we take those files, we convert them several ways so that they can be read by a generative AI application correctly. And then we build the application specific to sort of what use cases you need to, you know, need to be using this for. If there's like a staff report flow that we want to, to program for you. And so it takes us about two weeks to do that. From week two to week four, you know, we, we pilot with a small group just to test it, verify that it's giving the responses that we need. There's, you know, oftentimes like adjustments that we need to make. That's just the way that, you know, it is working with different government datas. There's, there's stuff that we have to tune to get it right. And then from day thirty to day sixty is when we start to do like an implementation and roll out. So we'll, we can, you know, deploy it to everybody at the same time. We can do it department by department and we can go with the board first and then staff. It, it really depends on how you want to do it, but we're here just to support it. And so you get a dedicated person from our team that's stateside. Honestly, all of us are based in Reno, Nevada, so we'll be somebody based in Reno to deploy this with you and be your main point of contact, like, you know, pretty much forever. And so that is sort of how an, an implementation would work. So with that,
You made the comments, you made the comment stateside. Is any of this stuff happening overseas?
No, it's all in this, it's all US. All of our apps, so we're building everything in Microsoft's, in Microsoft Azure. I know that you're Google, but we can deploy to a, a, a Google organization. But also all of the data, all of the data acquisition, all of the data storage and all of the AI that we're building is in the United States and it's hosted on United States servers.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from?
Oh, I was just going to ask commissioners if they had anything more. They want to look at it. It is, is it something? This was, is within my authority to, if you guys wanted to proceed with that. We could, I mean, I'm not asking you to make a decision. I'm just asking for direction. If you want to think about it longer, I mean, I think it's one of those things. I mean, I think you pointed out how quickly we could have used it today. I thought of another instance, just sitting here, we were talking about looking for the policies, all the different policies that we've adopted through the years, all those things. Where right now I'm going to go back and, you know, asking my department directors to go back and pull those things manually. Or, you know, were they originally in a Google Drive? You know, things like that that could expedite the process. Again, it is, you know, it is AI and, and we need to verify it. We need to, you know, it's so much of that gathering is what, you know, from being the paralegal for, you know, the past nine years, I have that information from like the attorney's files. So that knowledge where is, if I win the lottery and I decide to go away, you know, again, someone else can do that, but they're going to have to do it a lot harder time finding that where this would basically, you would replace me is what I'm saying. We don't want to do that.
Well, I told Vicki, you can never replace Vicki, but it is, yeah. Do you think everybody access in Vicki's brain is good, is a good thing?
I'm in favor of it. I think that that there may be another source for funding through the AGNC grant that we're working on. Because we could use this for picking up all of our assets and different things. So I, I, I would want to explore that.
Yeah, definitely. So a quick question I've got for you. So I guess kind of, so yes, the internal files, but we would give you the files that we want to include in that. So basically if we said we wanted to go back fifteen years, but if we happen to miss a file that is put in, you know, that we send you to use, can we later add that file or do we have to send that to you to be added?
Yeah, great question. So yeah, there, there, there are some mechanics that we, you know, work out when we are doing our deployment. We call it the data table. We built the data table in a deployment. So it's worth noting that with an annual, your annual subscription, we can update the index of information on a weekly basis or a monthly basis. You, you know, you can kind of choose the cadence at which you would like to do that. But, you know, in this case, you know, we usually give access to like two or three individuals. We try to keep it small so that there's not like a security issue to upload files to the database and then they would just get added on a weekly basis. So I know that you guys are a Google shop, so building, you know, either a Google connection or building a, a, a method in which we can collect the files without having to add an additional administrative workflow. We would work with Manager Edwards on that or the clerk and recorder, you know, because they also have a different set of processes that they use. or the cork and recorder, uh, you know, because they also have a different set of processes that they use. So to answer your question, yes, we can include additional files. Uh, we give right, re, you know, right access to two or three individuals, but also we build automation to do this on a weekly basis.
Okay, cool.
So, so that brings up a thought. When, if we do this, is this our system?
Yeah.
If we decide in two years that we don't uh like you anymore and then the information that in the system is ours, or are you gonna lock us out of?
Nope, it's so that the application is yours. So well, the way that will work is, let's say we wanted to terminate a contract in a year or two. Um, the data is yours. So if you want that, you, if you want a copy of the data and like the, the prompts and inputs that you have put into it, we would just send that to you. It's yours. Uh, and then if you told us like, hey, you know, we want you to implode the data, like no, no access, no application, we have like, we call it the nuclear bomb. We can just like, it like blow it up permanently and it's gone forever. So it's. It doesn't affect your, your internal records, um, because we're taking a copy. Um, but the data is yours, like we fully under, understand that. It's your data.
So help me understand the difference between this and that HR bamboo because we're talking, I mean, and I'm looking at the policy particularly because my understanding is that that HR bamboo also can hold our policies as well.
It can, but you have to know what the policies are that you're gonna put in there. Where this is actually gonna go back in search. This is more the search tool of going back and finding those things throughout the past. So for instance, if we use fifteen years and things like that, bamboo will only put in, and Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, but um that will be her finding a policy and putting it in there for personnel.
And we can include personnel documentation in this as well. Um, we just generally don't like to include uh data and information with PII most of the time, unless that there's a really specific use case for that. But like as a, an organization, the HR policy, um, we can include that to, eh, to, to.
I would think we would wanna include anything with PII. Really, it's just the personnel policies themselves. You know, here's what, how you clock in, here's how you, you know, what, you know, things a no-no, those kinds of things.
So the, the HR bamboo is particular to personnel policies, not county-wide policies.
It is, it will um use any policies that we put into Bamboo HR. So, you know, it's our personnel policies, our cash handling policies, our finance policies. Um, what it wouldn't do is like a different recorder stuff or anything like that, but anything that we drop into there um, then it will search. And you can ask it questions with like AI, you know, um, what can I use sickly for? Or uh how much cash do I have to have on hand before I have to take it to the treasurer's office?
So there's gonna be some overlap in this.
There could be some overlap.
Well, and there'd be a big difference between who would be have access to this system versus all the employees that might wanna have that, that would have access to Bamboo to ask about their own personal flow-through. So not all employees will have access to Madison AI, for instance. It would be the people that need the access, you know, for Reese, for Lynn, for myself, you know, for commissioners. I mean, there would be a more limited pool because you're in your your, this is a tool for you to be able to set your policy directions for know what the history is behind certain items for Don, you know, it's another thing, you know, that, that basically that's kind of what this tool is for, for, you know, it could be for the directors, you know. When was the last time that we did a, you know, this thing, you know, in history where, you know, one of the directors might wanna go back and look for that, that would be, you know, searchable, but it won't be a mass tool that everyone in the county would use. It will definitely be more restricted than that. Uh, Hayden, what's the average number of people that have a license or, you know, eh, like some of your smaller counties?
Yeah, great, great question. So um it really depends. So the we don't limit the number of users. Um, so you can give this to as many users as you would like. Uh, with your subscription, you get like, the easiest way to explain it is twenty thousand messages a month. Um, we've never seen anybody even get close to that. Uh, so smaller cities and counties. Let's just take a look. So Washoe County is quite a large county. Uh, they have currently have a hundred users. It's getting ready to deploy to an additional hundred users. Uh, maybe that's a bad example. Uh, city of Fernley, so I think they're a little bit bigger than, than, than you all. Um, but quite a bit smaller. They're gonna be deploying to about fifteen to twenty. Um, so it really just, it really just depends on, on how you picture this being used in, in your organization. Um, give access to who, you, you know, we believe in giving access to everybody who, who has a reason to be using it.
And I think that's that key thing of where we determine like maybe the flow of it is who really needs access to it. You know, I mean, it's, it's a great tool, but again, it, it's what would they be using that tool for? Um, so that, you know, we make sure that we're using the best use room employee time as well, you know, and if it does make someone's job easier to be able to utilize that, then there's a case for that.
So eh, speaking of policy related, I guess I'm envisioning we could say, you know, whether we first have to say, okay, please provide, oh yeah, and Reese says you have to say please all the time too, just for the record.
There are studies that say if you're polite, if you're polite.
That's a Reese thing. He says it, it'll, it'll come back to help you, but anyway. Um, provide me, um, you know, all policies on vehicle use.
Mm-hmm.
And then you could, could you ask it, are there conflicting policies on vehicle use? To help us sort through, because there could be old policies out there versus new policies and so forth.
Yeah, so there are, yeah, that, that is a use case to find conflicting policies. Specifically, we have built an agent really specifically that can look at code and analyze the code for discrepancies as well. Um, so that's quite handy. Um, the, my, my counsel back to you on this would be think of it like a really eager, overzealous intern. So the more specific you are on the instructions you give it, the more informa- the more detailed information it's gonna get back to you. So a search term like, give me all policies related to vehicle use, might be a bit, a bit too broad. But um you could ask it and, and continue to volley back with it. That's what it's designed to do. So our.
So the other, another.
No, I interrupted you.
I was changing subjects, so if there was any more there, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, the idea here too is like, so um our goal is to get you to like eighty-five-ish percent of the way there. Uh, and then, you know, we fundamentally and fully believe in human in the loop. So, you know, it's gonna take human verification. It's gonna take, you know, human work to look at this information, but uh, uh, you know, at the base level, we're trying to save like eighty, eighty-five percent of your time, you know, to find information in a file set.
Perfect. Um, so do you have to have everything in a specific naming protocol or file or whatever? Is that something that you, is when you take our files, do you rename them or something to make it work, or will it just search the files no matter how we named it?
I'm gonna pull open just like a quick overview on, on like some data to how we do the, this is a little technical, but that's okay. So, you know, we take the, the data sort of on this. These are common things. I know that you guys don't have an agenda management system or, and you're using Google as your like laser fish slash SharePoint. Um, so when we, we take your file set, we do a set of conversion on it. So uh generative AI applications to read data, they ha- the files have to be converted in a, a particular way. Uh, and then we do an extra set of conversion because oftentimes AI will miss things in tables. Uh, and that's really important in financial, in the financial world. So we do an additional set of conversion. Uh, and then we do some like metadata extraction. So one of the things we do is like, try to understand the file type uh and the date. So, you know, even if it's mislabeled, um, we, most of the time we can get through uh the, in the conversion process, you know, adding metadata to that and then recategorizing it appropriately. Um, but generally speaking, if you have like at least some good file hygiene, it doesn't need to be perfect, just like directionally correct, as we like to say. Then, you know, we, we can, we do structuring as a part of our deployment. Does that make sense?
One more question. Yeah, I, fine.
Okay.
Um, so another question, so so I, we've got a scenario right now that maybe we could use it like in the next month. But so this scenario is it would be documents that are not currently in our files, but we, we have them.
Sure.
Um, access to them. We would want to pull the, I'm, what I'm envisioning, we pull them all into one folder, let's say.
Mm-hmm.
And then we ask it to, and these could be some pretty big documents. I mean, some of them are gonna be five, six hundred pages. Others gonna be twenty and thirty, and I'm gonna say there's gonna be roughly twenty of them.
Yep.
So we want it to summarize or identify the priorities, in this case either recreation, conservation or agriculture. What are the common themes and the priorities that come out of all of these documents?
Yeah, yeah.
So we should be able to do that. How quickly can we do that?
You should be able to pretty quickly do that. The, so the, you have, the, the question is a good one and thank you for the context on the file size. So um uploading them, we would wanna put them at least temporarily as part of the permanent data brain. And the reason we wanna do that is because um using an application like ours, the, the base technology behind it is different than how like a Chad GPT or a Gemini or any other tools use it. Um, we take the data, we convert it and we use it in such a way that it doesn't lose, you don't, you don't, it's called context window. So a five hundred page document, you can lose what's called context window if you upload it into another application and ask it to summarize key points. Um, because it will run out of like basically space or memory to get through the whole document. So we can get around that pretty easily. We just need to like put it in and, you know, we can do like one-time data conversions and put him in, it into a data set and then have, you know, it, it available to you pretty quickly. Um, twenty or thirty files is not a big deal. Usually, you know, it takes a day or two to process like a sixteen thousand file data set takes a few days to process and convert. Uh, a smaller one like twenty to thirty documents is no problem, like in a, an hour or two.
Okay. So then my final question, remind me, cause I did, I think I saw this, remind me of the cost we're talking about.
Sure.
And would it cost us anymore to add these twenty out of our database files to it?
Yeah, so um I have adjusted the price to reflect the size of your jurisdiction. Um, I know that you're a smaller community, so I've tried to make the, the price reflect that. So it's twelve thousand five hundred annually for the year, unlimited users. It does include usage. I, you would never even get close to the usage numbers that are a part of that contract. Um, to include the file set that you're talking about, I think that would probably be fine as a part of the standard deployment. Cause we wouldn't charge you anything extra, especially because it's, it sounds to me like it's not a permanent use. Like it's temporary in nature.
Yeah, we'd probably keep those files to have them for future, but yeah, this is um yeah, this is a one-time major project that we need to get done in the next uh six weeks to two months. So that's the piece. I didn't know if we could get that, that piece moving for us if we, if we decided to go down this road.
Yes, if you decide to go down this road, I do think that we could, I'm looking at the, so our deployment calendar is getting pretty, eh, we do have a couple of deployments coming up. So let's say that you guys, you know, did decide you wanted to move forward. I could probably get you on the deployment schedule, definitely not next week, but maybe the week after that. Um, and then we could maybe have a usable application to you, at least in this specific data set context. Let's say the first week of August, I think is possible. We would have to be pretty uh judicious with our time and, 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 and focus where it's important first. Um, but I do think it's possible.
Okay.
Definitely by the second week of August, we can get you something that's usable. So that would give you, eh, eh, it would, it's a pretty short timeline though. Like, let's just, let's just honor that.
I thought that I have.
I don't have anything else.
So next steps then commissioners, um, I guess, I mean, are you thinking that we're gonna apply for a grant to do that? We go ahead and move? I mean, how long is the grant process gonna be?
So I'll know more this afternoon, but we've got a group of people that are gonna have to help us decide about this. So um, I mean, to me, it makes sense to do this, whether we can do it with this grant or not. But if we can make, use the grant to do it this year would be really nice, is how I'm gonna say it.
Yeah, of course. The other thing that I will just mention to you as a funding mechanism that has worked in the past in other municipalities in Colorado is there is a DOLA. There is a, a, a DOLA grant available that we have used in the past. Um, so, and I, I think it can cover up to fifty percent of it. You would have to talk to your DOLA representative though.
If, if, if the grant doesn't go through, then where would we pull it from budget?
It's gonna be in contingency. This was not a part of your twenty twenty-five budget. So this type of project would have to go through, um, it has to go through, we'll care about Chris. It's gonna have to go through uh your contingency.
So Ken, Lynn, have you ever used anything like this?
But I can see where it would be very, very helpful for Cora or records and just observing the way people come and go in the moment. I mean, Vicki said it all and it was her. Just trying to track down people who can tell you who the people are who might have it.
Mm-hmm.
Have you visited with any of the other directors about it?
Uh, we talked briefly about it. Um, and so one of those things that Hayden would need to get to us if we, I mean, to go down, further down this road would be to get all the specs so that um you know, the IT is good with it and that type of thing. So as far as the other directors, our directors, just briefly, that it's a assistive technology. I really kind of see that being more, I mean, just in the initial rollout, it's gonna be more, you know, on this side, you guys, that type of thing. But I mean, it's certainly, everybody else can also be using it. Um, you know, as they show that need, we do have to make sure that it'll meet the um needs of the county as far as our um technology.
I would like to hear Trevor's feedback on it to make sure that it's.
So in moving forward, Hayden, like I said, we have not actually gone down this. We got closer to it. So now going down this road, um, I'll need to get your tech, your specs to with our IT department.
Absolutely.
So you can follow up with me after the meeting and we can.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a, I've got some like security, like a, a, our security documentation approach and sort of like a, a, a architecture, how we build these applications, um, like readily available.
And does the information, so the information on Madison AI resides on your infrastructure, correct?
Correct. So we're building everything in Microsoft. Yeah, in our, it's in our commercial tenant, so it is, it is worth noting that.
Okay.
We can't get into the government. Yeah.
We will uh get um our IT folks involved in it to make sure it's a possibility. Um, in the, you know, the conferences that I've attended, it seemed like it would, it would meet most IT. So we have very robust security system, but um, I don't see it being a problem, but they might identify something that we need to make sure it's good.
Sure, absolutely. We're uh.
Thank you.
We're deploying in government in California, so I'm sure that we can meet your security requirements. Yeah, California folks, keep me on my toes.
All right, Hayden. Well, thanks so much and I appreciate you. Commissioner, just let you know, this was a spur of the moment thing. Um, it was a Friday. I think I called you and said, can you please do something? So it was very quick and he said, we're rearranged up, so kudos to him for.
Thank you, Hayden.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, commissioners, and uh have a good day.
You too. Thank you. Okay, um, do we feel like we finished up the CCI conversation? Was there any of the subcommittees you wanted, that you felt like you wanted to? Was there any of the subcommittees you wanted, that you felt like you wanted to be on that, uh, Kelly threw out there? Okay. I feel like. Did, did we answer all your questions?
I think so.
Okay.
You and I can finalize it if there's anything we need to do.
Okay.
Whatever. Perfect.
Um, so the next one um, is the discussion first on the um. Uh, letter of support to Colorado um, competitive oil and gas lease um, from natural resources to BLM. Um, so they're coming up on um, opening up oil and gas leases. Um. And I know I had a couple of questions and I know Reese isn't here today.
Um, I think he is.
Oh, he is online. Oh, there you are, Reese. Awesome. So one of my questions, um, and I think you took care of it when I went back and looked at the letter. Yesterday was, I was wondering why we had CDPE on there as well as. BLM, but it looks like you took off CDPE off of that headline. Is that correct? Or do they need to still be addressed to CDPE?
No, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the draft I have before I left, and it is all addressed to. BLM. I'm wondering if that was maybe. The draft letter for a later item on the agenda today for the Wild Earth Guardians petition. Um. But it might be something we want to double ju, double check for the draft you guys have in hand.
I was wanting to actually remove the CDPE portion when you and I were discussing.
Okay.
When we searched the statute or whatever the number was, it was not CDPE.
EC or BLM.
It's the ECMC.
Oh, that's on the other one.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Let, let me make sure I'm straight. Which one are we talking about? Are we talking about the?
Gas lease.
The gas lease. Okay, so it is the BLM.
Yes.
Sorry.
Um. The only other question that I have on that one is. You reference sage grouse in one of your bullet points. Um, I wonder if we need to be more specific with this greater sage grouse, because that's where. The wording is with the MOU, and I'm trying to pull it up here. Um, it's on the second. Sorry. Um, right here. Picture one, two, three, four, five. Um. Fifth bullet point on the second page.
We can add that.
Adding greater sage grouse and not just sage grouse.
I think that's just fine.
My other.
That, that's probably smart. That is just in reference to what BLM is already prepared, so I think that's good.
Okay. The other piece that I would like to see in there, um, and I, and I'd want your feedback on this, Reese, is. Um, you know, the, the statistics of, of how it impacts, oil and gas impacts. Our county budget, so putting in that percentage, maybe getting with Renee and putting. What Rio Blanco pulls in with their county budget just on oil and gas. Um, as well as um, how it impacts school districts, because I know when I've went and testified before legislation. They always ask me those two questions. So I think that if we put that, just how it's, it would impact us or how it supports us, I guess. Um. In our county budget as well as school districts budgets and, and how it kind of trickles down there that way.
Perfect. Would you like to see those added as a bullet point or more in the narrative section?
Um, maybe a narrative in, in the beginning when you talk about, um. You know, you talk about how it, it, it impacts us in that, I believe it was the first paragraph. Um, just maybe somewhere in there.
Perfect, can do.
Thank you. Did you guys have any questions on that one?
The only thing I've got, Reese, and I don't, if you have it in front of you, um. The third bullet on the second set of bullets. The CEC resources, I don't see where we have explained what CEC is.
You said that's.
And I couldn't come up with it in my. Yeah, the third bullet, last line. Vis, wilderness visual and CEC resource concerns. We're being real nitpicky on you here, sorry.
No, 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 this is.
We can deal with it.
I um. I, I believe, oh, I see it, found it. Um, I believe that's a good point. We should add that. I believe, you know, that's a BLM acronym. I believe it's critical environmental concerns. Um.
Right.
I think we should add that, and, and I'll take a look to see if it's, it doesn't look like it's anywhere prior in the letter, so I think adding that parentheses. Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. But no, I, I appreciate, I know you've, you've learned, and, and I think it's a great um. Piece that you've got that set of second bullets in there, what? How this relates to their documents as well as our land use plan. So I think that's really good. So thanks.
And, and I think that's, that's the stuff the agency's really looking for. That's going to be valuable for the NEPA process, right? So I appreciate you saying that.
I think that between the two of them and, and given that this is a, uh. Has the potential to have some people opposing it. I think it's a good, good letter. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely, happy to do it.
Okay, anything else on that one? No? Okay, um, the next one, that our last agenda item um, is. The ECMC Energy and Carbon Management Commission um, uh, letter of opposition. Um, the Wild Earth Guardians had um, submitted a petition. And um, I, so I went back and read most of this petition, um. Which I had to stop myself se, several times because I got frustrated with it. Um. Um, and so. After reading that, um, here's just some questions that I have, Reese. Um. You know, they talk, the, the, their main concern is these greenhouse gas emissions as well as. Climate change, and we all know that the climate change rhetoric that they go through is just that rhetoric. And it's what they believe it is when it's not really even scientifically based. Um, and so one of the questions that I have is, have you had an opportunity to talk with our public health director? About um, the air quality that's in Rio Blanco? I, I know that she has access to some of that information. I don't know to what extent she does. I know that her and I have discussed it as far as, you know, our air quality, that CDPE um, monitors. I don't know in, you know, what. What areas, I guess, that they're doing this air quality control. So I guess that's just a question that I have if. If maybe we, do we add that sort of information to show that this is where Rio Blanco is with air quality control?
We have not collaborated yet, but I think that's, you know, any data that we have to, you know, any comments we submit. Is helpful, so that's something that I can do. I will say, um, you know, the operators, the way I understand it, already have to. Monitor these emissions specifically onsite versus the broader county area, and, and I think that's really what. Um. You know, this particular petition is about, but I will, I will stop there and wait for other questions. But I think there's an opportunity to collaborate both with. Um, operators as they feel comfortable with emission data at well sites, but certainly any data we have in-house.
Well, and I think that, I mean, not think. Where some of those thoughts came to me, and, and why I guess I'm questioning it is, you know, they tend to put in these. Um, sentences in their petition, one being, um. Uh, you know, they were questioning the operators and what they're reporting by saying wildly incredible. And then they would go to the health and safety of, well, what does wildly mean? I mean, they said it in this petition a couple of times. So tell me what wildly means. I mean, they, these are the facts. This is what our operators are reporting, and. You can use that term wildly all you want, but um. That doesn't give us anything, any substance in, in. Doing this letter of opposition. Of them putting more, I mean, what it sounds to me, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, after I read, I read half of it. Um, is they are just wanting to put more on our operators to. Be reporting more than they are already reporting. Did I, did I gather that correctly in this petition?
Yeah, and, and I think mostly they're questioning the quality of the data, and, and they're stating that it, it's, it's not good enough. And it's not being held to a high enough standard to protect public health. And air quality. I, I think that's more the discussion of these programs and these regulations already in place, you know, legislation is driven. This already in the past, and, you know, um, West洛Koga was really helpful at, you know, adding some information and some. Some perspective on how the ECMC is working on implementing this already. And these groups really need to give the ECMC a chance to get this kickstarted. And, and not rush, rush to the finish line and already jump to a conclusion without any data, as you mentioned, that this isn't good enough. Um, you know, when we were doing some, some of those field tours, they were talking about some of the emission data. I, I think it was from uh, harped evac ponds, if I'm not mistaken. And what they found, right, was actually the emissions from their fans to control. The evac ponds was uh, uh, emitting more emissions than the actual ponds themselves. So. You know, there's some interesting discussions here that, that I think, um, I think the Wild Earth Guardians. And their cohorts are, are getting a little ahead of themselves. And then there's that, that social cost of carbon piece. Um. I'm not really sure what they're asking for there, because that's really, really difficult to calculate. So it's, it's a pretty um, pretty intense, pretty extreme. Uh, petition, but also I, I also struggled to see exactly what they were asking for besides. You know, more strict regulations, um. You know, because we really haven't had a chance to see uh, the current regulations all the way through, in my opinion, and just in conversations with operators and West洛Koga.
And, and I'm glad you brought up the social cost of carbon, because I actually went online and looked it up to, like, is this a real thing? And it, it, you're absolutely right. I mean, that, what it came up with is, it's a variable, like they, there is no facts to it. There's no data. To the social cost of carbon, which again, makes me wonder if they've just made this up and are pushing ECMC. To look at that data, which there's really no data. So. I, I appreciate the, the letter and, and your diving into it. I do plan on. Going and doing a public comment on this on that day still, um, so maybe you and I can get together and, and do a little bit more of that. Um. Some of the information you were just sharing right now with the, the ponds, and we can give some of that data. To, if, if the producer's okay with us doing that, um, you, you and I can have that conversation, but I, I would like to go before the commission. And let them know that we appreciate the work that they have been doing.
I, I think the good news is too, is it sounds like the commission has uh, re, refused a petition similar to this in the past. Um, you know, and even if they would choose to accept this petition and move forward with some rule makings, we'd have another opportunity to engage. I think it would be really important before we testify uh, to reach out to Chelsea and. And make sure we're all, all on the same page with West洛Koga, and they may, may already have some of that data that we're looking for, so. Um, no, happy to, happy to help and engage on that with you when the time comes.
Perfect, thank you.
So I guess, Reese, um. The, the additional, another thing that I think there's value in hitting in this just in general. And we've heard it loud and clear at any of the conferences that we went to, is the need for energy is not shrinking. And we've got to produce energy. So not only is it an economic driver for our county, but this is, I mean. People's lives depend on this stuff. So I think somehow, I just made a note of, you know, the need for energy is growing in a hungry. Energy world. Um. And I guess the reality is. Wild Earth Guardians is just trying to stop oil and gas, period. That's all that's really going on here, but um. I don't know, any reason not to just flat, call that out.
Well, the, the uh. The thing that comes to my mind, and I was going to address this later, but I'll, I'll address it now, the, the uh, things that come to mind. Colorado is, is a hypocrite. They're, they're trying to uh. Take care and make us better for all of this energy and stuff, and in actuality, the, the world, the nation needs energy. And they're going to go across state lines and get energy and bring it back into Colorado that is more harmful than what we have now. So they're, they're actually hypocrites and, and they're, somehow we have to acknowledge that.
Yeah, and I don't think it hurts to call it out in these, I mean, we're, we're going to get energy from somewhere, so. Might as well do it here where we do it well.
And the way that they're doing it, they've proven it. It costs more in pollution when they bring it back into the state than they do doing it here.
So somehow, if we can capture any and all of that, and I know that's a lot, Reese, and, and we may not be able to catch it all in this one, but those are just. Things that we can use in. Um. This or future, as we, this won't be the last time we have that opportunity to have those conversations.
No, I, I agree, and, and to Jennifer's earlier point, the, the language of this petition, it, it does have some indication that. You know, what, why is this really being filed? Because these parameters are already in place. The ECMC is definitely doing their job to protect public health. And things like air quality. So it does feel like just a further and further push to. Um, perhaps have operators throw their hands in the air in Colorado, right? Um, you know, and I think that's the basis of the letter for now is, you know, these parameters are in place. ECMC is doing a good job. They need more time to implement. And operators are following the rules and protecting air quality. Um, but I think that, that those broader points that you just mentioned. Um. Should be included, you know, similar to discussed on the last letter as well.
And these are due when, Reese?
Uh, the, this, this letter is the sixteenth, I believe, July sixteenth. Um, I will have to double check on our due date for lease sales, but I will, I will look at that right now and send you guys a note.
No problem. I just was hoping we give you enough time to do it, because I know you're, are you back?
I am. Yeah, I am indeed back after an all-night flight, so I'm, I'm ready to go.
Thank you for joining us after your all-night flight. I know how those are.
No, no worries.
Thank you. Yeah, hope you had fun.
Uh, definitely, definitely.
Perfect. Thank you, Reese. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
All right, that brings us to the end of this, um. There are any other topics or issues that we need to discuss before we adjourn this. Meeting or session?
I don't think so.
No?
Uh, well, I just will let you know that we've got a great response so far to uh, the volunteer fair. Um, it was called the Volunteer Time Off. Um, so I have, I believe, all the elected officials that will be there on the twentieth to. Bought the hot dogs. We got the big hot dog from um, Costco. So we've got the good hot dogs, uh, chips. Uh, we'll pick up the water, mustard, maybe some g sauce, I don't know, just a variety of things, but so far. I was very pleased that all the electeds will be able to attend, or at least at this point, said they will attend on the twentieth for that ten to two um. Lunch setup period, and so I'm hoping that this will go well, and, and then also I've already gotten several people that have volunteered or, and some people that have already. Uh, have already, are always volunteered for the fair, excited about the process of being able to use those limited hours to. Excited about the process of being able to use those limited hours to, you know, really kick this fair off. So I'm hoping we'll have a really good one this year.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All righty. And we will adjourn the work session.
Good job.
Hmm, now we have.
Twenty minutes, maybe.